Will everybody stand and face the flag, please?
Hello, Mr. Crum. The prayer first.
Father God, we bow before you humbly. We ask that you bless and use each member on the city board. Father, we lift up the hurting hearts that are in our nation right now. We ask that if anything good can come from this turmoil, that you would show us your will and your way through it. We ask all these things in the powerful name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it comes, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to call this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you please call the row?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McClendon?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
City Treasurer Martin? City Accountant Tori Perry? Counselor Cat? Counselor Crum?
Here.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Mohammed?
Present.
Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
I think that Harris is on. I don't know if the mic is muted or not, but I think she's on.
Well, we got a nine out of 10 present. If Ms. Harris can come through, I'd definitely include her to the meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion for a second.
I get a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Abstain.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
When the minutes are approved, we're going to go to old business. Mr. City Attorney?
The second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 1701 North 7th, permitting a trucking-related business in a C2 open display district.
With the permission of the council, I'm going to ask, can we suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
I make a motion.
All in favor, aye.
No.
Call the row.
Yes, sir. Counselor Cat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
It is.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
It passes. Mr. City Attorney, will you read it for the third time?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for 1701 North 7th, permitting a trucking-related business in a C2 open display district.
Having to hear it for the third time, are there any discussions?
May I ask procedurally, do you get a motion and a second first before we can have a discussion?
Well...
You need a motion and a second before you have a discussion.
All right, then we get the motion and a second to approve the...
So moved.
All right, any discussion?
Please. This business has been approved by planning. It's gone through all the appropriate agencies it needs to. The only problem I have with reading this out three times and approving it today is we still don't have the information from RDOT, the traffic congestion that this possibly could cause would have an adverse effect on Cracker Barrel trying to come off the off-ramp to even get to their facility. And I can't see automatically approving this ordinance and this business use until we get something back from RDOT telling us how it's going to affect another business. And I just would like for the council to give it another two weeks until we can get that report from them. It may have no effect, but I'd like to know for sure before we approve it.
I do agree with Counselor Cat on that. You're talking about North 7th Street. How far down on North 7th are you talking? Near the railroad track or where? Is this going to be located?
Now, as soon as you, and I'm sure Mr. Luker's here, but as soon as you pass, you come off the off-ramp right there at Cracker Barrel, you go underneath the overpass, the business will be located on your right.
Okay.
There may be enough distance there.
I think it's going to be north of True Value.
Yes.
In that vacant lot.
Yep, where all that concrete is now. And that's what has been there in the past, but...
Now, this is saying here that it's a trucking-related business. What exactly does that mean, "trucking-related"?
Well, again, Paul can come up. QT is a national firm. They have multiple locations throughout the country, and it's a fantastic company. They do a great job for their employees. I'm first to agree with that. The only concern I had was I can't see sacrificing one for another. But, and before we had our final vote, I would just love to have seen the report from RDOT. Paul may have it, I'm not for sure, but I don't think it's come in yet. And I just hate to approve something when it adversely affects another business who's been with us for quite some time.
We also have a representative from QT here.
I'm looking here at the diagram. It's a beautiful facility. How many people would that employ?
Well, we have a representative here, Ms. Mohammed. Let me bring him up and Paul as well.
Oh, sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Daniel Chambers, and I work for QuickTrip Corporation, and I office out of 4705 South 129th East Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. What Councilmember Cat was alluding to is there's potential, there was some concern that we had with the planning commission with Paul, talking about any backup on the frontage road of trucks being able to get into our facility without causing any backup on the frontage road. What I was able to submit to Paul today is we were able to, corporately, we agreed to move the drive all the way east, as we discussed in the planning commission meeting, and we have to go get that approved through RDOT. And I guess to kind of eliminate possibly some of your concerns is, is if RDOT doesn't agree to it, we don't get that drive. So they do have to agree to that drive moving, or we don't get it. So we are comfortable as a company moving forward at our risk of potentially not getting that drive if you guys are willing to approve it tonight.
And Tracy, I just remember we did talk about that, and that is, that was concerned, and I agree with you saying that because it just came back in my memories. We talked about it earlier in the meeting. So, again, I mean, that's what we had agreed that we was going to wait on for them to come back and report.
I mean, I love the submission they have. I think it's a fantastic company. You know, I'm not in transportation business, but I would never want to do anything that would adversely affect your business by putting something there that would cause a problem. I just wanted to make sure, and I know you say we can go ahead and approve it today, and we can wait two weeks or a week for RDOT, but it doesn't affect you getting any, you're not going to start construction this week, you're still going to work on your drawings, you moved it to the east side. I mean, I would just love to wait till we get the report, but I'm going to honor the wishes of the council.
And we just asked that you guys move forward.
Hold on, hold on. Counselman, the gentleman is speaking, and then I go to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. We just ask that you guys keep moving this forward. We have contractual obligations that we need to meet, and so we're just trying to meet those and eliminate reasons that we can possibly waive on the site. So just working with the sellers and through the kind of the challenging times, just trying to get all these things met so that we can make sure that we fulfill our contractual obligations.
Well, what I'd like to do is hear from Philip and Paul, because I talked to them a little earlier, and they didn't seem to have a whole lot of problem with it. I, for one, want business to come in. I don't think it'd be that big of a deal because we have Walmart down there with fuel station, we have Kroger with fuel station, we have business in that area. And I feel like that what you're setting up would have, would be an in-and-out where you would not be affecting Cracker Barrel's business and other ones, you know, the truckers' supply. I'm just ready to see things change.
About how many employees will it have?
Thirty employees, ten management positions, and twenty clerk positions is what we're anticipating for this facility.
Are any of those people coming in from other companies, or will all those come from this general location, geographical area? Are you bringing any employees with you, or will we hire from this geographical area that we're in?
We are planning to hire most of them from the geographical area. There is possibly, potentially, some of them, our employees might want to move here and relocate here, and that would be, that would be an option for them, too. So we do let employees relocate if they want to move into Memphis.
Right, right. Well, I think it's a beautiful opportunity for the city of West Memphis. I'm just concerned as far as Mr. Cat has said about the traffic, and of course, we're going to get RDOT opinion. I have no problem with it other than that. I'm good, I'm good to go.
Well, personally, I think that even if we approve it today, and they can continue on with their negotiations and get their plans.
Right, right.
But if RDOT comes back and says, "You've got to do it this way," I'm sure that this company would be very willing to change their plans to adapt to RDOT.
They will have to.
I do agree with that.
I don't have a problem with us going ahead and approving this today.
If I may, I learned a long time ago not to make predictions and definitely not speak for another company. You know, RDOT may turn around and say, bring a different drive in on the west side of Cracker Barrel, circle it around to 7th Street, and that would just be completely cost-prohibited. So, you know, again, I truly want the business. I truly want you here. I just wanted some assurance that it wouldn't affect another existing business.
Sure.
I have one question. I'm sorry. I do want to know, Counselor Cat, your concern, how long have you all been discussing this? Your concern? I think this is the first time collectively we've heard about your concern. I know you've been talking with planning commission with Paul.
No. My apologies. My first venture with this was Thursday of last week, the DRC meeting.
Okay. So since last week, this has been a concern. The only reason why I want to know, I wanted to make sure I wasn't slipping, and I wanted to make sure certainly, you know, is this the first time your concern has been brought to us so that we can kind of...
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Just, just another consideration on it. We did put a lot of thought into how we did lay out the interior of the truck court to try to minimize any potential stacking. That is why we do have, have the fueling stations oriented the way that we do so that we can try to get the trucks in and get them out so that they are not stacking up on 7th Street, so it, not, excuse me, on the frontage road, so it doesn't, it doesn't become an issue. So just, I wanted you guys to let you know that, too.
Again, I look forward to that location and you being in West Memphis and investing your money. I just wanted some, you know, something from RDOT showing that this is no way going to affect an existing established business.
Sure. We appreciate your concerns and bringing it up and the frank discussion about it.
Hearing no other discussion, it's time, time for a vote. So, Ms. City Clerk, will you call, will you, you call the row?
Yes, sir. Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
But what, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
What are we, what are we voting on right now?
You're voting to approve, you're voting to approve granting special use permit for 1707. Yes.
This will be the third reading?
Yes, this final reading.
Okay, yes.
As the second reading on the agenda.
Yeah, we did.
Just a little mistake, no problem.
No, we, it was just, no, I actually asked you all to suspend the rules, and you all gave me a motion and a second to place it on the third reading.
I was lost. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Hello. Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
The motion. Yes, it passes. Thank you all, and welcome to West Memphis. Can I get a number, an ordinance number for that?
That ordinance number will be 2550.
2550. All right, I have a third reading. Let's see the attorney.
Third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 1510 East Broadway, permitting an automotive dealer used in a C2 open display district.
Hearing the ready for this third time, can I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
All right, any discussion?
If I may, what has changed from our conversation six months ago concerning the opening? We had a, you know, probation for a while. I mean, what happened in planning? What happened with our zoning? What did I miss?
Well, I mean, I don't want to speak for Paul or the planning department, but there was a procedure passed for the special use permitting situation, and I haven't gone to these meetings, but I assume they've gone through it properly, the process, and here we are.
This is the ward, well, this in ward, be on war four side, but I guess one of the issues that came up was so many car lots on Broadway on the east end of town, and they was not looking desirable, and the council wanted to do something to make sure that they put something in place to make sure if you're going to have a car lot, you're going to keep it up to par.
Are both the council members in the ward okay? I mean, have they indicated they're in favor of moving forward with this? Since I'm always first to the vote, that kind of like know their feelings, though.
Well, one thing I can say about this, of course, like I say, I talked with Paul this morning, and we have actually been, even our eyes peeled at it for quite some time, you know, they've had cars already on the lot, you know, that was inoperable and things of that nature. And here, the whole thing is from 14th Street back to 16th Street, you know, I think code enforcement needs to really look at it because, you know, you just need to look at it. And when you ride down through there, and I know everybody talks about what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, and once they get the license and everything, it goes back to, just go down and take a look, and you'll see. I don't have to tell you. Just go down there, take a look and see. And these are all the things that we have approved, and a lot of this has happened since we opened it back up, and we conserved proving and approving and approving. Like I talked to Paul this morning, I'm fine. I don't have a problem with it, but I just think that the codes need to start being enforced there. I know that. Just go down there and take a look. I, you know, I challenge all of them to go down and take a look. You know, Mr. Rick, you're there as well. Go down and just take a look. From 15th Street...
No, 16th Street.
...to Broadway, all the way to...
16th Street.
Let's just say all the way to 16th to 17th Street. Just go down and take a look.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
We're talking about 16th Street, first block. It is bad. We need to go down there and do something about it. But this is on 15th Street on the north side.
This is on the south side. I strongly agree.
It's clean.
I strongly agree. But the only thing that I'm saying is, if you ever notice wrecked cars, we should know that. That's a bit of, they've been, they've been over there since they've been trying to get this approved, you know, inoperable cars. But that's fine. I mean, if you want to go approve, go down and approve it, and, you know, and I just think that, you know, code enforcement needs to do something about it.
Okay, let me, let me add. It'd be a clean slate for the new owners, hopefully, if you grant them a special use permit. I just don't understand how hard we are working to reevaluate the east end of town with the new fire station, with the new schools coming down there, ten apartment complexes coming down there. So giving you all this special use permit, we ain't expecting it to come up and look like it's been looking for the last couple of years. I will use code enforcement to make sure and demand that that lot be what it needs to be. So when you see them, if you're out of compliance, don't say I'm sending them down. I'm already, you know, from the top, we going rebuild and revitalize the east end of town. So get out, get it out your mind that it's going to be like it used to be. It's a new day. So whatever the council seeks for that point, we move forward.
And Mayor, I feel like these people are going to keep it up, going to keep it nice, and if it wasn't, I wouldn't, you know, if you know anything about me, I wouldn't put myself out there saying this if I didn't think so. They want to be in this, let them open the vehicles. And if they don't apply, we know what to do. We're going to send code enforcement out there.
Again, I support the ordinance. I'm fine. I mean, I'm thinking, I'm saying is, you know, I support the ordinance, but, you know, we've had this number of times where, you know, people coming in asking us to do something, and yet still, they already violating before they even get started. So, I mean, I, I mean, I support the ordinance. I don't have a problem with it. Like you said, give them a clean slate. I mean, you know, maybe they might be right. I don't know. But so far, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just tired of approving things when people trying to get something approved, and at the same time, you know, you see nothing but, you know, wrecked cars here and there.
Hearing no, is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the city clerk, will you please call the row?
Yes, sir. Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Ten out of ten.
It passes. Congratulations. And when you get that ordinance number, please, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be 2551.
2551. All right. City, city attorney, we got a third reading. First of all, did we come over the census zone because if you go on the table, it would be, it won't be no discussions?
I make a motion, we table it indefinitely until we get a sample to sit down and prove
All right, we got a motion to table it on the floor? You got a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposites, so it passes. It's table indefinitely, and the personnel committee get back with everything and get it back on the agenda. New bid, the councilman Pulliam?
Yes, sir. Make a motion, read by, oh, one by Tyrone.
I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? The city attorney?
An ordinance establishing the net metering regulations of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and the West Memphis Utility Commission, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm going to ask you all to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading according to the motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing the net metering regulations of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and the West Memphis Utility Commission, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm going to ask for a motion and second to further suspend the rules and place it on the third reading.
So moved. So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City attorney?
An ordinance establishing the net metering regulations of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and the West Memphis Utility Commission, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
May I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? It's open on the floor.
Well, I mean, I'm also reading it out pretty fast. I'm just not from the mercy.
Okay. Hearing the discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now I'm going to need a motion and second to approve the emergency clause. Do you want to do the session?
Section four.
Section four, if you all want to place on the mercy clause, or you don't. So I'm going to get a motion and second to approve section four. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the first?
Counselman Pulliam, did you say opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, read, call the row.
Yes, sir. Counselor Cat? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
No.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Willis?
Yes.
It passes the emergency clause. So, Ms. City Clerk, will you get oh one, an ordinance number, please?
Yes, that will be ordinance number 2552.
That number is 2552. Permission request. I need permission to sign it.
So moved.
Oh, hold on.
Second.
Hold on, I already...
Everybody's ready to jump on that one.
Yeah.
We trying to save some air.
Okay, okay. Well, we already got the motion and second, but let me just do the title for the record. Permission authorized me to submit a sealed bid to the county for land as described in the county's recently advertised notice of sale. If the city is to successfully bid, the bid will be brought back to the council for approval on the bid amount. Payment to the county will be dispensed from the estuary at closing of the sale of the Friday Ground Railroad. Pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement with the West Memphis Base Railroad, such sale agreement being approved by city council on March 19, 2020. Who were those two that made the motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you all for giving me that permission. Next on the list is committee reports. Next on the list is, uh, committee reports, I know police, public works, and budget met?
Well, uh, no, sir, the police has.
Okay.
Yes, uh, we met on yesterday afternoon, uh, we'll report out next, uh, council meeting.
Okay.
If I may add to the report, the commission, of course, has approved, basically approved for the, what it's called. And I'm not more positive than the county's. Typically, it already budgeted five cars for twenty-twenty. Of course, it not been ordered yet.
Take at least ninety to a hundred and twenty days before they come in. Uh, so you're looking at two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty. They had one additional car that they already have, but has to be re-quit, which is approximately And then they received a grant for approximately fifty-five thousand, uh, and this five-thousand-two-forty-five-twelve is part of that grant. So there's really not any additional expenses for two cars, I believe, for detectives?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, uh, commission approved them, just simply wanted to go ahead and present it to the council. Hopefully, they would go ahead and grant the, the permission to move forward. And if they have any questions about fund balances, I will turn that over to Tori.
Are you putting it in the motion form?
Yes, sir, I am.
Make it a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion about purchase of other vehicles? Anything to Tori? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Purchase the cars, it passes. Does that conclude the police report?
That approves their request to bring before the council, as chairman indicated. Uh, I have not typed them in as yet, but I will have them to him shortly.
Uh, public works, Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, public works, I met Tuesday of this week, basically a reconnecting meeting. There was a lot of discussion regarding the trash and garbage pickup. I mean, basically, that discussion dominated the entire meeting. And of course, the mayor was there and he and the department heads, uh, are going to get together to discuss some kind of a definitive plan as far as how we're going to pick up, the days we're going to pick up to help keep ours clean as it should be. So once we get those, once we meet with the department heads, uh, the city engineer, Ms. Amanda Hicks, and others, other council members, and come together, uh, and get a definitive plan, we will go forward from there because one of the main things that we are having a lot of issues with trucks being broken down, the COVID-nineteen people being off work, and, uh, people are just complaining, but we just want our citizens to know that we are working as diligently as we possibly can to try to get our city cleansed. We're gonna get together and come up with a definitive plan. One suggestion was, this is nothing that's set in stone, so please don't hold me to it, is that we just have all of the, uh, public works vehicles in one ward on one particular day, have the sanitation, street sweeper, our garbage truck, have them all in one ward on one particular day. So to me, it seems like it'd be a little congested, but it may work. Nothing fails but to try, that's just something we're going to be discussing. So, uh, that ends my, my report for our public works meeting.
All right. Um, did the budget meet, or did we get the numbers in?
The police commission request was already a budgeted item in the twenty-eighteen, so there was no reason to take it back for them, the council had already approved it.
Okay, I have a reminder, fire commission meeting is, I think I got a text.
Fire commission, did you say fire?
Yeah, you are, fire commission, you also sent a text out that you all was meeting.
No, fire commission, uh, fire commission, I was gonna do that at the announcements. We are planning to meet, uh, next Tuesday, June twenty-third at twelve noon in the council chambers. We've already connected with Chief Rose and with the commissioners, and we are planning to meet next Tuesday at noon, June twenty-third, next Tuesday.
June twenty-third, thank you.
The, uh, the chamber and the airport commission, we both, we both met, we all met, so, um, under the chair, the chamber report, um, of course, during the pandemic, everything's kinda slow for the chamber, so we met by Zoom on June the fifteenth. Um, there's a couple of fundraisers going on, one of them is a fifty-fifty raffle, where you buy a ticket, and depending on how many tickets are sold, and if your ticket is pulled, then you will win more money the more tickets are sold. So, uh, that's going on, you can stop by the chamber and pick a ticket up, I think they're ten bucks or three for twenty-five. And, uh, the only other thing that's going on basically is, uh, we're starting to gear up with the fall leadership program and, uh, the community events. Uh, but that's it on the chamber report. On the airport commission was held this morning at eight o'clock. The, it was basically to let the, uh, commission know that the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics, uh, will allow, uh, an additional time for the grants that are, uh, going out. And to complete the hangar number three rehab, as long as progress has been going on down there, so we're gonna, they're gonna rehab number three hangar and they're waiting on some money now for the grant. Business has been slow, they hadn't had a lot of, uh, a lot of traffic in and out of the airport, um, because of this pandemic, so that's the, that completes the, uh, chamber and the airport commission.
All right, I don't think there was no other?
I've got the West Memphis Utility.
Utility, okay. Utility commission, mean?
Uh, utility commission that met on June eleventh, twenty-twenty. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date at eight-thirty P.M. Safety Director Brett Sims reported that there was eighty-six days since last recordable injury, two-hundred-and-thirty-five days since last lost time injury, no recordable injury for the month of May. General Manager Todd Peterson presented the personnel update. He stated that there were no new hires and one involuntary resignation for the month of May. The utility currently has twelve open positions. The fourth item on the agenda was April financial update. This was presented by the general manager, manager, once again, Todd, Mr. Todd Peterson. He presented the negative cash flow through April twenty-twenty. A lot of people, I'm sure, hadn't been working, and that stands, stands to reason. The fifth item was the net metering rules, this was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. Motion passed unanimously to forward to city council for approval. I'd like to make one statement that I think should be told, Todd's doing an excellent job, but this is one fine quail oil machine, the way these guys run this operation. Thank you.
All right, was there any other committees I may overlook? All right, uh, go ahead, councilman.
Well, AMP did meet, of course, please, but, uh, one of the things that they're talking about, we discussed really was just opening it up, but they're still gonna wait, putting everything off for a minute before he opened up, so that was the biggest thing. And then, uh, of course, with COVID, I think, you know, the funds is up somewhere, they're not hurting bad, so we're doing pretty good for that. Yes, and, uh, Mr. Monday, he was, he was not there yesterday.
All right, you know, the committees that may have met. Hearing none on the move to appointments, I don't have any, uh, do you have any appointments or? I, I do wanna ask for a motion in a second to declare vacancy for the city treasurer's position.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I didn't, I didn't hear the motion. I mean, I didn't hear the, uh...
Well, I was asking the council to, uh, declare a vacancy for the city treasurer, Frank Martin O'Shea. All right, thank you, it's been approved, so you all have declared a vacancy? Was there any other discussions about appointments or?
Yes, uh, on the clerk's, clerk's position. Uh, we talked, didn't, uh, after, the young lady didn't want the job, and, uh, so, you know, it's, it's, we got a few months before election, before you had to sign up to get ready for election. So Patricia is here now, she's been doing the job all the time. I feel like letting her complete this out and then people that wanna run for clerk, that'll run for clerk, at the, uh, time when we, you know, when we get ready to run, let whoever wanna run for it, run for it, let her finish out her term, we don't have but a few more months before it's time to run. So I wanna make a motion that Patricia Lane be interim, interim clerk until upcoming election. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second, uh, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make, uh, one, one thing, we just, we decided at our last, at our last, uh, council meeting that we would fill the position, uh, and we did with the, the young lady who just sent in a, a regret letter saying that she couldn't, uh, continue, uh, but I think we oughta go outside and just fill the position, and, uh, that's what we agreed upon doing, and that's what I'm gonna stay with.
Well, right now, motion in second has been placed on the floor, so what we'll do, we'll read that motion out, and, uh, if it fail, we'll come back to it if there is another...
Let, let, let me say this, let me say this, of course, uh, Mr. Monday, you got the, you got the, uh, recommendation, everything from this league in your hand, 'cause I gave it to you this morning. It said that, and it, it goes back to the discussion that we had the last council meeting, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, it says that we can do that, but it must be done by orders, no employee or no elected official. We can do it by orders. Now, again, it says they do not recommend that we do this. If you see, I can, that's wrong with, you know, with, with this line being the clerk, but that she can't hold the first position and, and the employee position at the same time.
Well, that's, that's not the way the statute reads that I've seen. It's not specific as to who can be appointed. Uh, it just says that the council can by motion and majority vote, appoint someone to fill out, uh, this year until the general election, when somebody else is elected. Now, uh, that, I don't know what else you're talking about, about anything that you can't do it.
That's what Monday's sitting in that category.
There's no, let me finish if I don't, if I, if you don't mind, uh, but I have read the statute today, and, you know, I'm not su, I've talked to Lanny Richmond as well, who we have taken a lot of advice from, and, and, and I know that, that, uh, you've probably talked to him in the past as well, I know everybody's met him because he came here in December. Lanny told me, and I'll repeat this, I've said this before, uh, on the council floor, and I'm gonna say it again, he told me specifically, and I'll quote what he said, that if we did this by resolution or ordinance, appointing, uh, someone to, to fill out this year, we would be the only city that does do it that way. Now, uh, if you've gotten some different information from him than I have, I'd be happy to share it with you.
But they say they recommend that we do not do that. And, and, and all the other council members, y'all seen, so you got it, so it's not like you don't have it in your hand, 'cause everybody have already seen. I mean, now, again, I'm proud of doing it, but then again, like I say, towards the elected position and the employee at the same time, I'm totally against that. And I don't think we should do that, we've done it in the past, and it was done, it was done in proper order, and it caused nothing but confusion, that's what, that's what it will cause. I would like to reiterate that I brought this up when we were talking about old business, and I was told to wait till the end of the meeting, and so I think that my request should be, have priority over, uh, Councilman Monday's request.
Councilman Crum, you brought that up during pre-council, which we know pre-council is not a legal meeting. Uh, we got down to appointments, and I was making it clear, I said I didn't have no appointments, so I gave everyone an opportunity. So it is a motion in second on the floor, and I'm gonna call for the vote. Miss City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Um, abstain.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Harris? Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Abstain.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam? Counselor Willis?
Uh, we got five?
I got six, I wrote down six, counted them.
Pass. Uh, the motion passes. Any other questions on anything else dealing with appointments? All right, on the move to presentations, uh, basically, I just wanna say, uh, Happy Father Day to all the good fathers and all the councilmen that's on council, working for the city around the city of West Memphis, that are all men who has been an inspiration or even not biologically the father, but who have stepped up and took on their role, I just wanna wish them a, a very happy Father's Day, hearing from the city of West Memphis. Uh, any announcements?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would, uh, would like to, uh, donate five-hundred dollars to one of the city Boys and Girls Club and L.R. Jackson Boys and Girls Club, five-hundred each.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have an announcement, Miss Clerk?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that it is a requirement when you have more than one council member in a meeting, that you have to have an audio of your meeting, anybody. So all your committees that have not been, uh, taping your committee meetings, you're in violation, you have to tape them. That's airport and a couple more of them, they have to be on audio and turned in to the city clerk's office, and you can go ahead and hold them until the end of the year, put them on a flash drive, but we are required to store them in the vault for one year until after our audit. So going forward, we need your audio. Please, thank you.
I may ask a question about that. When we have our meetings in here or in pre-council, and they're Zoomed and everything else, they're recorded, uh, we don't need to bring you a separate recording, you can just simply contact AMP and they can provide it to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Uh, I have an announcement, uh, this, uh, uh, the governor's COVID care steering committee has set aside a hundred and fifty million for the COVID-related expenses, uh, monies for the cities and counties in the state, which that is good news because, you know, we, you all allowed us to move the money from Community Development Black Grant money to potentially pay for these needs dealing with COVID, where there were light bills or different situation like that. The communications, uh, for instance, like the communications director, you know, Nick, uh, how to set up Zoom meetings or any things like that, we reimburse, we can be able to reimburse his salary with that, the state will also reimburse time for him running out, as well as for the police department who took their school officers and made them a COVID task force address in the, uh, COVID-nineteen issues that we may have in the city, so Chief, uh, I'm sure you keeping up with those numbers and time, and it start from March. Also, it's going to buy ones for cleaning police cars, reimbursing that as well, as I hope, hopefully paying for, uh, ambulance services as well. But those are some of the things it's gonna reimburse, so a lot of this money that we did use to pay for the COVID-nineteen needs that you all granted and that we cares this month, some of this month will be recouped through this month, and so that will allow us, if this pandemic doesn't get any worser for the rest of the year, we better use some of that money to do other things that Community Development and HUD approves for us with that money. But this hundred and fifty million dollars the state is setting aside will go to help pay for the things for its emergency services, just different things like that. Also, uh, all PPE, personal protective equipment, mask, gloves, hand sanitizers, thermometers, cleaning supplies and all that, it's now it's gonna be reimbursed through this pile of money, so that gonna help save some of the budget money that we have budgeted aside, so that will help us out a great deal. Also, any COVID-related expenses can be reimbursed, reimbursed with this one-hundred-and-fifty million set aside by the governor's, uh, COVID care's committee. We will have more information next week, a conference call is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-third at three P.M. That's Tuesday, June twenty-third, uh, three P.M. You are welcome to be here, or we can Zoom in if you all just wanna be a part of it.
Is it gonna be set up here now?
Well, we're just gonna have the conference call, where we normally use the, the phone that we have in the, uh, the council, uh, chambers, and if you all wanna be a part of it, just to hear what's going on, you're welcome to be here, but it is June twenty-third at three P.M., and they will have a completed list of all eligible expenses from that point. So.
Will this also address the, uh, the utility assistance program? Because people are calling me, and I had absolutely nothing to do with that, they're asking when their, their bills will be paid, and I know nothing about it.
Well, I, I can't say on that, Ms. Mohammed, uh, I know this is mostly for emergency service like police service, our city expenses, uh, necessarily can't say on that, but I do know June twenty-third at three P.M., they are going to give us a completed list of what they're going to fund, but I don't think they're gonna pay light bills.
But what about that, what about that light bill situation? We've had about almost four-hundred people filling out applications, when would their requests be completed?
Well, actually, what, what we gonna do on that, we are looking into that right now, but I want to, and I made this clear when I made the announcement, you have to have been personally affected by COVID-nineteen. This is not a program that, 'cause you blind on your light bill, we just gonna pay it. So, uh, we have the money, and soon as we can weed through them and get through everything, and the one that does qualify, we will make that payment, 'cause that money has also been deposited within the, uh, planning's, uh, bank account, the, uh, Community Development money, so we won't have to buy, uh, use any of the general fund money as well.
So I can just tell the people that is being taken care of, is that right? Or call you all, call City Hall?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, also, we had meetings where we actually tried to bring all those individuals in, and many of them did come, and some of them qualified, and some didn't qualify.
Right, I know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other announcements?
Uh, Patricia?
Go ahead, Ms. Crum.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, these recordings of our, um, committee meetings, who, who needs to furnish the recorder?
You can come by and pick up, uh, the mayor bought three recorders, you can come by and pick one up prior to your meeting and just return it, and we have the ability to load it right onto our computers and put them on flash drives. So we do have recordings that you can sign out in the city clerk's office.
Okay.
Yes.
All righty.
Also, uh, the Arkansas Municipal League has been counseled this year, so it's not gonna be a municipal league meeting, so hopefully, I know you all are budget conscious, so we gonna save a little money with the municipal league, because right now, uh, it is counseled at this time. Did we lose in the balance on, on Zoom?
On Ms. Harris, or someone.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I did wanna, no.
Okay, you want to go here first?
Yeah, I did wanna make, just, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, say Happy Father's Day as well to all the fathers. I was kinda blank when the mayor was speaking, but, um, certainly to all of the fathers, those on council, those in the city. Um, we, we love, love you, we admire you as women and we wanna, uh, celebrate you on this Sunday. To my dad that just called me, Dad, I'm gonna bring you your jack cause I noticed what you called me for and I know you watching. I love you and Happy Father's Day. And, uh, that's pretty much all I wanted to say to all the fathers.
Any other announcements? I did have one citizen request. I don't see him, but, oh.
I thought we was at the end, I understand.
Okay, good.
Uh, like I said, most of them approve, uh, Mr. Murray's request for the $1,000.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second? Can I get all in favor, aye? Oppose?
Aye.
All right, that's, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, we have a Benny Boyce that signed up. Is he here? Okay, come for him. Get to the, what we normally do is we normally give five minutes and, um, you get, state your name and your address and address the council. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't recognize you.
Okay, come here. All right, thank you. Uh, my name is Benny Boyce. I live on, uh, 706 South 15th Street. And I'm here to discuss with, uh, council today about a proposal for flood control. Uh, I invented a product, uh, and a device will, um, evaporate the water. Now, I understand here in town, uh, you invest a lot of money on pumps. We pumping from water from one place to another, but that doesn't really solve the flooding problem. Now, not only here in West Memphis, around the country, it floods certain times of the year. It's just different storms we have from hurricanes, uh, tornadoes and floods. Flood being the worst one of them all, okay? Now, in the last two, three years, United States has spent about 150 billion dollars on flood. Okay? Now, my proposal is this. I've already submitted my idea to the United States government. They haven't got back with me yet, but it's different states along the Mississippi that it floods all of the time. Matter of fact, I think last year, Little Rock, downtown Little Rock was underwater. Okay? So we have to do something to be a little bit more proactive in our approach for floods. So a mere three days in any city, pretty much any city in the United States, your city is flooded. A torrential rain for three days, your city is flooded. And for us to be proactive and to get on something like this before something really major happen is very important for us to act on this right now. Now, what I'm proposing is I did a small, uh, prototype of my invention. I would be glad to show it and show my ideas with the council, if you allow me. And we can get something started to prevent, uh, a large, large catastrophe. Something could be prevented and we put something in place, but you have to act now. We cannot go back to doing something now you know something exists and you have a problem, you have a solution for it. We have to act on it. We can't sit on it and say, okay, we'll think about it. Floods happen here year round. Like I said, all the United States, it always floods. Every major city that floods, you have a levee. You keep the levee down, no floods in your city. Simple way my device work is this. Imagine if you had a bottle of water, a hot skillet. You can pour the water into the skillet and the water just splashed a little bit. It wouldn't, very little evaporate. Take the same bottle, put a nozzle on it, a spray. You spray that skillet, that water will never fill up the skillet. The minute that water touches the skillet, it evaporates. My machine turns the steam into, uh, electricity by turning a turbine for a steam-powered generator to go back into this machine. We don't dissipate the, the, uh, vapor into the atmosphere. It powers the machine. Machine burns it off and then that little bit dissipates into the atmosphere. The main goal is to get rid of the water. That's what it does. Thank you for your time.
Now, tell me something, uh, Mr., Mr. Benny. Is this a machine or a device that you have had, has it been patented?
Sure, I patented, uh, yes.
Anyplace else?
Uh, I'm sorry, what's the last question?
Has it been, has your device been patented and used anyplace else? Or would our city be the first experiment with this?
Yes, good question. Uh, I have patented this device. Uh, I've talked with the mayor. So I hadn't patented it at that moment, but for something like this, it need to been patented. So I filed for the patent. And also, uh, West Memphis, I'm from West Memphis. Even though this is a problem for something of national ramifications, it can start right here and can build it here for the rest of the, uh, the world to see it. And like I said, it can start right here. I've submitted this also to, uh, Tennessee and made contact with people over there also. So like I said, this is not something just only for West Memphis. It's something for the whole nation because, like I said last week, if you, uh, looking at the news where, uh, North Carolina or Texas somewhere, it's flooding. This is the time of year we have rains and floods come in all the time. Like I said, flooding is the worst of all. You have tunnels, tornadoes and hurricanes. They go by quickly, water sets for days. You cannot do repairs, you cannot save people. You cannot do anything in floodwater until the water recedes. My device get rid of the water and use it for energy. And that's going green all the way. So again, uh, my proposal to the city, if we can get this together and pu, pu, put something together to, uh, have a prototype where you can see. It can be scaled up from any size you want it. You can have it in your backyard or something, mainland levees for flood control. I see your pumps pump water from one place to another. Again, good, but that, that's stopping. You flooding one place to another and that's not getting rid of the water. So my purpose is again, to get rid of the water.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you.
Uh, let me ask you a quick question. When could you come give the council a demonstration of the, the invention?
Um, I can give you a demonstration as soon as, uh, probably a day or two. Yeah, I already, you got a prototype ready.
Okay.
And, uh, I would like to show it to you how it works.
All right.
Well, they may give us an opportunity on Tuesday.
Yeah.
On what day?
Tuesday.
They may give us an opportunity on Tuesday.
Exactly.
Well, absolutely, that'd be great, Tuesday. Absolutely. I would get, yeah, yeah. Like I said, um...
4 o'clock, good for everyone?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, Tuesday, you come by and show us.
Come by here.
City Hall, to see the council be here.
Great.
Looking for.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I wanna announce that, uh, the council members that are here, you all have your financial package right here, but the ones that are on Zoom, your financial package, we'll be here at City Hall, just pick them up. They ready for you right now. So Councilman Pulliam, Councilman, uh, Crum, Ms. Muhammad and Ms. Harris,